On Tuesday 13th of July, sorry, yeah, Tuesday 13th of July. Sorry, 19th, I'm looking at the last minutes. This meeting has been webcast with the exception of any business, the council resolves to exclude the press and public because of the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined by the Local Government's Act 1972. And just Gary.
And just to confirm for anybody who's viewing the meeting, given the extreme heat, the majority of members are attending remotely and members of public will be able to see them on screen. Members attending in the chamber are councillor Prendergast, who's chair in the meeting, councillor John Hall and councillor Hugh Irving and councillor Terry Mendes.
Thank you, Gary. Part one, the press and public are invited to attend this part of the meeting. Apologies first, I have received apologies from councillor Alwell Roberts, councillor Ellie Chad and councillor Ralph. Are there any other apologies anybody wants to put in? Thank you. Declarations of interest. Members to declare any personal or prejudicial interests in the interest of any business that identify to be considered at this meeting today.
Thank you, Chair. Members will be aware of the requirement under the council's code of conduct to declare any personal or prejudicial interest in respect of any business to be considered at today's meeting. Such interests should be declared now or as soon as the council effect it becomes aware that they have a personal or prejudicial interest in today's business. All members declaring an interest are required to state clearly what the interest is and to advise whether it's a personal interest or a personal and prejudicial interest as defined in the code of conduct. Any member declaring a prejudicial interest is required to leave the chamber for the duration of the business and can take no part in the proceedings. Members with a personal interest only may take part in the debate in any vote. If a personal or personal and prejudicial interest is declared today that has not previously been disclosed and recorded, the councillor concerned will be required to complete and sign a declaration of interest form which is available online.
Chair, could I, I'm not declaring a prejudicial interest at all, but I miss giving councillor Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones's apologies. Do forgive me for butting in. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Butfield.
The Chair, if I may, on a similar note, I was looking for the raise hand function, but you moved into the declaration of interest. It's just to say that I've had a message from councillor Holliday. She's not giving her apologies, but she's saying she's having real difficulties with the technology and getting on Zoom. So she'll try her best, but at present she's not able to to attend remotely. But that 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 may change, just to let you know.
Thank you councillor McCullen. Any declarations of interest to be declared? Okay, thank you. Urgent matters as agreed by the Chair that are on this morning. So we go straight through to the minutes of council council meeting on Tuesday, the 5th of July. We have page one. Page two. Any issue? Go through the minutes then for any issues to raise. Page one. Page two. Can we have someone to move the minutes, please? Thank you councillor Irving. Second. Thank you. All in favour? Please show. Thank you. Agenda item number five, council performance self-assessment. To consider a report by the strategic planning and performance team leader to provide a self-assessment of the council's gates function. I understand councillor Gwyneth Ellis and Nicola Neil are going to present this this section. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Jo. I will try and continue with the video on. We'll see how I go. The this comprehensive report gives a detailed picture of our current situation as council against priorities set by a set to measure governance and and activities to support diversity. And we're asking you today to prove the report that it's a comprehensive report. And I would recommend that each councillor reads it carefully because there's lots of information, very useful information contained in this report. But at this meeting, we're going to concentrate on the report itself and not any service or project that's discussed within the the report. So with that, I would like to hand over to officers who are responsible for the report, Nicola Neil. And I'm not sure whether Yola McGregor is here as well. Thanking them very much and everybody else who contributed to this work. Thank you very much.
Dear councillor Ellis, yes, Borodar Pau, myself and my colleague Yola McGregor will take you through and the pertinent parts of this report today. And I will cover the sections that relate to our current corporate plan, which makes up the first part of the self-assessment report, with my colleague Yola McGregor covering those governance elements that make up the self-assessment section of the report. Okay, so just before I start, as long as, sorry, as well as the cover report this morning, and you've got three appendices before you. Appendix one is a self-assessment and that will be produced annually and that will provide you with commentary against how we're doing against our corporate plan and also a summary of performance against some key governance, some key areas of governance as laid out under the Local Government and Elections Act. And that's the report that I'll focus on today or the appendix that I will focus on today. The other two appendices that you have in front of you as well. And the appendix two is for the report on how we're performing against our current corporate plan at quarter four of this year. And so that's up until the end of March 2022. And then finally, the third appendices that you see before you is is almost an end of programme type of report because we're approaching the end of this corporate plan. It summarizes our original ambitions with the previous council's corporate plan and then also looks at how how we've performed and what we've delivered, how we've delivered against and the context of the ambitions that we set ourselves. But as I mentioned, today, I'm really going to focus this discussion on the on the corporate priorities. So which are which are in appendix one. So first of all, and the first priority that we have at the moment is housing. With the previous council, we'd set ourselves really ambitious targets and against which we've made largely good progress, sometimes exceeding the goals that we set ourselves, particularly if you look at the supply of affordable housing, for example. Nevertheless, though, demand continues to outstrip supply. So this, the provision of housing for the people that need it in our county remains a significant challenge for us, particularly in relation to homelessness prevention. But as you as you know, through the work that we've done recently, developing a new corporate plan, housing remains a priority for us and a key and likely to be a key focus of the work that we do over the next five years. And the second priority that's given commentary within that within that report is around connected communities. This is largely focused on physical infrastructure, so our roads and our bridges and also digital infrastructure. Much support has been delivered in terms of reducing digital exclusion. And we've just actually received an award as well for the support that we've offered in this field. The road conditions in Dembisha have improved slightly over the last few years, but ongoing significant investment is required in order for us to at least maintain that position that we're in. Similarly, although digital connectivity has improved over the last five years, we still lag behind the ambition that we'd originally set ourselves for our communities. Our influence here is really limited, but we do recognize that in that good digital infrastructure is vital to enable our communities to work, to study, to socialize and communicate and to feel connected and be viable for the future. So this continues to be an area of priority for us in the future, but it is a challenge for us due to our limited, the limited extent of our influence. In terms of the priority around resilience, this really focused around promoting individual resilience and independence and also community resilience. Over the past five years, we're proud to say that we've become a council that is working towards becoming dementia friendly. And I think broadly, it's fair to say that within this, within this particular priority, it's been a priority where partnership working has been crucial for us to achieve our goals. And we have had, we have experienced challenges though in terms of resourcing care. That's both financially, but also we're facing challenges at the moment in terms of capacity and recruitment challenges in order to to provide the levels of care that that we have to do so. And over the past five years, though, we have launched a carers strategy in recognition of the important work that carers do in supporting residents in our county. Moving on to the environment priority, we've made great strides in this topic over the last five years. And there's been a program of extensive tree planting, nearly 20,000 trees have been planted across the county in areas that were that were quite impoverished in terms of the the tree canopy. There's been significant investment and work done in terms of flood prevention. And we've also really significantly developed a climate and ecological strain change strategy. Some of the goals for which include becoming a net carbon zero organization by 2030, becoming an ecologically positive council and then also reducing emissions from our supply chain by 30%. They're the key three pillars really of that climate and ecological straight change strategy that's been developed in the county. I should emphasize to you how challenging though that target of becoming a net zero carbon organization by 2030 is. We've recently had some new data actually and that that I will share with the council. After this meeting, it's just come in at the end of last week, so apologies that it hasn't featured initially in your report. And we have reduced the level of carbon emissions quite significantly compared to our baseline. We had a baseline of about 16,000 tonnes of carbon emissions every year. That's now just under 12,000. However, there's still a significant way for us to go before we become a carbon, carbon net zero organization. And finally, in terms of the priorities, the fifth priority that we had in the current corporate plan that's coming to an end is one around young people. Now, there's been a significant impact on young people and due to the pandemic, as you might expect. And certainly through education, in the education lens, we've seen an impact on attendance and timetabling. And the unfortunate position is that they these, the impact of the pandemic is likely to have exacerbated inequality. This will pose a challenge for us as we move into the new council and as we move to delivering our new corporate plan. It's also combined with some challenges in the external environment, such as introduction of a new curriculum. So there's a lot of adjustments for schools to make in terms of the curriculum and also some work to do in terms of trying to address the deprivation gap that prior to the pandemic had been closing. Attainment will continue to be a key focus for us as we go forward, and particularly as we look at the impact of the pandemic. Okay, thank you for that. And I'm going to hand over to my colleague Yola McGregor now, and who's going to talk about some of the governance areas.
Thank you Nicola Diop. I'm going to take you through the second half of the QPR report, but I'm effectively going to cover the messages that are in appendix one, the executive summary. So if you want to follow through your papers, I'm starting on page 19 of your packs. So this section of the report was introduced as a new statutory requirement under the Local Government's Elections Wales Act, Act on Performance particularly. So we've got to cover these seven headings that I'm about to take you through, which are our seven governance areas. So the first heading is around corporate planning. And, you know, you'll see through the the report that we've done a great deal strategically as a council over the last year to meet various legislative requirements, particularly under the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act and also our Equality Act. We published our interim strategic equality plan last year that has to be produced every four years, which is off kilter with the cycle of producing our corporate plan, which is every five years. But that's the way the legislation has been written, unfortunately. And you will have all been involved, of course, in the work to develop the new corporate plan. And we have a very clear process to get that through approval in October. Also, in the last year, we've introduced significant new arrangements around the replacement EU funding and level up, leveling up funds. So significant work's been done there to have, to prepare the council to respond to those new funds. Challenges looking ahead will obviously be the the restructure of SLT, part of which has started with the appointment of the corporate directors. So the next phase now will be the next challenge for us to look ahead to. But also new ways of working, of course. The project that we have in place has determined that, you know, we will see how we go in the in this sort of interim year and make decisions based on staff behaviours. So we will need to respond to our needs as that progresses. The next heading covers financial planning. Overall, we've got strong processes in place. So that was confirmed by an audit opinion. We also made a welcome move now towards three to five year budgeting, something that I know has been called for for a very long time. Challenges, we do still face significant budget variances that are being managed in year. And there's also challenges around timetabling for the end of your statement of accounts. And but I know our finance department is always having close conversations with audit colleagues around those challenges. But it does put pressure on our finance team who are having to you know backlog of work that they then need to catch up on later in the year. Another obvious challenge that we're going to face as a council is rising costs globally. We all know that costs are rising. And also something for us to look ahead to is the transitioning in of our revs and bev's service back into the council. Performance management is the next heading. So we've had a report from Audit Wales in the last year that confirmed that we have effective performance management arrangements in place. But we've also strengthened those performance, our performance requirements in the last year to meet new legislative requirements, majoritively under the Local Government's Elections Wales Act that I've mentioned. So these reports that you're receiving today are actually part of our strengthened approach towards meeting legislative requirements. For the future, we need to look at improvements that we can make to our reporting system. We retended our software in the last year. So that comes with it some opportunities to make some enhancements, hopefully, just making it a little bit more user friendly for staff. And another consideration that we need to look at in the next few months, once the position with SLT has been clarified, is a return to our performance challenge program, which is an opportunity for members, cabinet and senior leaders to look closely at the the business of each of our principal services. Next heading is risk management. Again, we've improved our methodology around risk management, following some recommendations from internal audit, particularly around risk appetite, and we've we've implemented some improvements around risk appetite for the authority. Overall, engagement with risk management is excellent. And the the main challenge, I think, is that we are finding now, we are as an authority, having a significant number of risks because of the changing global situation. So to sort of help communicate those risks more clearly, we have now produced a summary that we've posted on the council's intranet. And we'll also produce that when we take our risk updates to committee. Workforce planning. HR have been working over the last year to address issues brought about in the wake of COVID, including backlog in terms of DBS checks, but also significant issues that we faced in terms of recruitment and retention, of course. We have strong workforce planning arrangements in place. And also, of course, HR have been working hard to support the new ways of working project with particularly an emphasis on the mental health of staff. However, new ways of working is again going to be an ongoing challenge that will require some looking at in terms of workforce planning. Assets. There's a lot of challenges here, aging road and bridge network in need of continual investment. But it is positive that the council has committed to further investment. The carbon agenda, as Nicola mentioned, it's going to be a massive challenge for us. And but but we have made some positive steps, of course, already. And but those sort of quick wins that we've introduced early on in the program are going to become fewer and fewer. So as I mentioned, it's a positive that we are investing in roads and bridges. We've also put in place significant actions in support of flood alleviation, as Nicola touched upon. We've also made protections in place in support of our ICT infrastructure, which has grown and grown. And we have new frameworks to support our property portfolio as well in terms of maintenance. So there's some positives to report in terms of assets. Accommodating the new ways of working, though, is going to be still the next to be challenged for our assets. The final heading is procurement. So here we can report that our procurement team have made improvements to advice and support available to services and encouraged good procurement practice across the authority. Decarbonization actions have been hampered due to management capacity, though, but there is intention to recruit expertise in that regard. We've progressed a number of actions, sorry, a number of collaborative projects through our procurement hub, which has achieved positive outcomes for individuals, particularly in terms of sustained work placements. For the future, though, a challenge is going to be around the sustainability of our procurement hub and also adopting the new procurement strategy, which I believe is going to be coming before councillors quite soon. So that's a quick canter through the seven governance areas. I'll just hand back to Nicola if there's anything else to say, Nicola.
Thank you for that summary. And I'm happy to open to questions if that's agreeable with councillor Ellis as well.
Thank you councillor Ellis. Thank you, Yola, for all the hard work in this report. First councillor, councillor Gareth Sandland, please.
Yes, thank you very much for the report. It provides very interesting reading on the on the performance previously of the council. My question is really to the CEO. So Graham, I hope you're listening. How do we maintain the challenge for team Dembisha? We've, we've looked at this, we've got ambitious new targets. You know, we want to aim higher as 48 councillors here, we all want to see this council go above and beyond. So how do, how are you going to maintain the challenge for your officers and really try and improve resident services? Thank you. Just a simple one to start with.
Well, it's, thank you councillor Sandland, yeah, Graham here. What's a team, it's got to be a team approach, isn't it? So how are we going to do it? So we're all in it together in terms of councillors and officers working together. So the first port of call is to make sure we get a clear corporate plan. So we've had a session recently with all the members, which I think was well received. And that will lead us to a decision in October on the corporate plan. We've probably got some more communication with members prior to that. And then that will set the targets for the corporate plan. And then we must ensure that we work towards achieving those standards. And we'll have appropriate governance in place, appropriate reporting. Members can hold us to account through requesting reports to come to scrutiny, et cetera. Regular reports at cabinet that all members can attend, regular reports to to full council, such as this meeting. And then collectively, we'll understand what resources are needed to meet those, to meet those targets if we're starting to fail. So I mean, it's a bit of a, it's a, you know, it's a difficult one to answer councillor Sandland, but hopefully that's given you a flavour of where we are. What I would say is, you know, our SLT team, you know, are determined to work as, you know, as hard as we can to adjust our resources to meet the needs of the corporate plan, and that's what we'll do. Thank you.
I guess what I'm after is how are you going to motivate them to do this significant challenge coming ahead? You know, there's obviously, we've got plenty of strategic, you know, reporting functionality. But what makes us different from other councils, I guess? You know, what is the the driving force behind Dembisha? What are our core essence of values and motivation? That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that all day, can't we? And I've got my kind of five, the five principles that I have and, you know, those five principles around our own culture. And that's working to our values of integrity, unity, pride and respect. So we must work towards those and creating our own, our own culture, the Dembisha way of fair and open challenge, where we work with our communities and work closer and be closer to our communities. And we know there's more than one community. There are any number of different communities out there, from rural to urban, to those that go to school, to our elderly, et cetera. Performance, clear performance, that's at a corporate level in terms of things like corporate plan, but also at individual level, where our staff have regular one to ones with their managers and clear expectations of what they're required to do. Close working relationships between members and officers, absolutely crucially caused to this. Where officers are supporting members and we have mutual understanding and respect. And the third thing where we support and grow our staff and support our staff and train our staff and allow our staff to have the tools that they need to meet to do the jobs. So they, that's how we do it. That's the Dembisha way of doing things.
Thank you for that clear explanation. Thank you.
Graham, councillor Charles Williams.
This is a little bit different. I read the appendix tendencies and on page 34, it mentions SARS. I'm actually on the waiting list. I'm declaring an interest on that.
Okay, thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Martin Hogg.
I just want to ask something about some of the, some of the measures appear to be based on surveys, it looks like. For instance, percentage of residents satisfied that the, there are job opportunities for young people. How do these surveys work? Are they, do you sort of assess how many people respond? Was it a representative sample, et cetera, et cetera? And why do we rely on these? Is it, is it just for a more rounded view of what's going on?
Who would like to?
Nicola? Yes.
Thank you. And I'll start by answering your question, Martin, but then I'll probably hand over to Yola, who's does a lot of work on the surveys itself. So, and over the past five years and even with the previous council before that, we've run a resident survey where we have asked questions on a biannual basis of our residents. And and we've based those questions on our priorities and how we might be performing against them. And the purpose of that is to do something of a temperature test with our residents and with our communities to find out how we're doing against those against those priorities we've set ourselves. I think it's important that we don't just look at performance from a data perspective, but that we also test perceptions. And that's been the reason behind doing that. In the past few years, we've, we've, we've used different models for reaching out to people. So that may have been through paper copies exclusively and and mail drops. But more recently, we've taken more blended approaches. So we will have run electronic surveys, had hard copies available in libraries, reception points, et cetera. And the Local Government and Elections Act actually puts a statutory duty on us now to to survey our residents and other stakeholders, such as trade unions and partners that we work with, et cetera, on an annual basis. And Yola has been doing much work on that. So you will see some reports about the results of those kinds of surveys in our self-assessments coming through. But in addition to, to kind of tailor-made surveys, we can also look at other other community consultations, engagement sessions, feedback. other um community consultations, engagement sessions, feedback that we might have received throughout the year and draw some conclusions about our performance and about the public's perception of us from those as well. And Yola, do you have anything further to add?
Not a great deal more to add. I mean, essentially, it is a legislative requirement. The um resident survey that we previously ran on a biannual basis was best practice. And it was expected of us by our regulators that we did that. We kept we we kept that going. Um. And when the new requirements of the Local Government Elections Wales Act came, it specified the types of questions that we needed to ask around the performance of our functions. It specified the stakeholders that we needed to be reaching out to. Um. So we took the opportunity to merge the two surveys, the resident survey and now a new stakeholder survey, as we're calling it, to cap off the corporate plan that's just finished, so that we had data to start and at the end. Going forward, we're going to drop probably the residence portion of the old resident survey stuff that looked at local area information. But we will focus instead on the statutory stuff because the survey was very large and probably put a lot of people off answering it. So i- in an attempt to try and increase engagement with it, we're certainly going to try and condense it, um focus on the statutory questions that we have to ask. Um. That's likely to run actually from September. Sorry, um, October, November time, I think, this year. Um. So you'll have an opportunity to see that again and help us promote it, more importantly. Um. The numbers of respondents that we had to the last survey were low, but still a representative sample, an acceptable sample. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I I think we we should probably all as as members try and promote any new surveys, really, because it's potentially very good information. But, you know, you have you have to understand it's reach and its engagement, really, to to be able to interpret results, I suppose.
Thank you, officers. Um. Basically, we're looking now for council to approve, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could I come in, please?
Yes, sorry, councillor Anne Davis.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find the app to put my hand up for some reason. Um. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Nicola and Yola, for that presentation. Uh. Nicola, this question for Nicola, you did mention unpaid carers and how many we have in the county. This comes up all the time. And I'm wondering now if you could elaborate, please, on what exactly is being done to recruit carers and take the pressure off these unpaid carers in the community? And more importantly, free up beds in a specific land, including. It's a very, very serious situation at the moment, even in this heat. The ambulance are having to keep patients in the ambulance for up to seven hours because there are no beds and there are no beds because they have been blocked by people that can't get care in the community. Now, you know, this is very serious now. And I think as a county, we should be really prioritised prioritising this. Because if it's like this in the summer, what is it going to be like in the winter months? Thank you very much.
Yeah, councillor Davis, I'll answer your question to an extent, but it I would have to caveat that it's not an area that I directly work in, so I won't have all of the detail. It may be an area that you'd like to put forward for further scrutiny, for example. But I know that in terms of recruitment, pressures that are being faced are being faced by all services. But obviously, with recruitment for social, health and social care staff, that particularly and or recruitment challenges can particularly put some of our statutory services at risk. I don't think we're yet at that point, but there are pressures. And I know that a project team was established a few months ago and to look at how we could encourage people to come forward as carers. So there have been some job fairs that have put on. For example, there's been really close working with working Dembisha and contact with local schools and colleges and and promotion of trying to promote health and social care as a career because some of the challenges that are being faced are short term. But we also want to plan for the long term response to avoid or to prevent such challenges occurring again in the future. And I don't know if there's anything further that Graham, you'd like to add, or perhaps the lead member. You may have some more detail on this than me. Thank you.
Yeah. Graham, yeah, I mean, we could spend um a long time talking about those issues that councillor Anne Davis has has raised. And uh my colleague Nicola has provided in part an explanation there around the recruitment and retention of social care staff. And we're working really hard in that area. It's difficult because of the competition that's out there, the lack of people to do with the job. So it's not for the lack of trying. We have set up our own internal action group where, which is led by our corporate director Nicola Stubbs, who's working with HR and a range of colleagues, looking at different ways in which we can try and retain our current social care workers and actually attract more into Dembisha because we have a number of vacant posts that needs to be filled. So we are working on that really, really, really uh giving that a great deal of attention. We're not alone, of course. It's actually an issue that is repeated across the country. So we are also working with colleagues in health and colleagues across direct uh fellow directors for social services across Wales and indeed beyond to try and find some solutions to that particular problem. The issue of bed blocking isn't quite so easy. A lot of research has been done recently on the issue of this bed blocking, that there's people that are stuck in hospital because there's nowhere for them to go. Uh. There are a number of issues around that. I mean, if there were places for them to go, they would be going there. There are some issues around caring, the right appropriate care that can be provided. And again, nationally, Welsh government are leading on this with the health authorities and the local authorities to try and unblock a thousand beds nationally. And there's a number of work going on across Wales on that, and we are obviously playing our part on that. But, of course, the general management of the ambulance service and the health authority is not in our domain. We don't manage that and it is for others. But we do work closely with them and have a number of good, strong relationships where we're trying to work across the piece. And, of course, this is the the panacea around health and social care, working more closely together. It's been something they've been working on for a long time nationally and will continue to do so to try and iron out those areas that need improvement. Because clearly, across the piece, there's more that we can all do to improve the circumstances that councillor Anne Davis has described. But it's not, I can assure members, it's not for the lack of trying and it's not for the lack of effort that we are working to try and find solutions to those problems. Delphine Vow, thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Uh. There appear to be no more hands raised, so I ask for council approval. If we just have a show of hands. Oh, can we have a move, somebody to move it first, I beg your pardon? Thank you, Gareth Sandlands, and somebody to second it.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Cheryl, and a show of hands, please. Thank you, Nicola and Yola, for all that hard work, really big, comprehensive report. So it's clear a lot of work had gone into it. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Graham, for trying to answer a very difficult question. Uh. As you say, it's 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 important to all of us to get a resolution to that problem that Anne raised. Thank you. We'll go over now to agenda item number six, pay policy statement. To consider a report by the HR manager and pay and reward specialist to seek approval for the pay policy statement. I'll hand over to Gary Williams.
Uh. Thank you, Chair. Yes, the the HR manager, Louise, is unavailable today, so I've been asked to present this report. This report is one that's required by legislation. So the Localism Act of two thousand and eleven requires each council to publish a pay policy statement, which has to deal with the matters that are set out in section four of the report. Uh. And predominantly, it looks at aspects and elements of the remuneration of chief officers, uh the approach to the publication of an access to information relating to chief officer remuneration, policies relating to the remuneration of the lowest paid and the relationship between the remuneration of chief officers and other employees. Uh. So, as I said, it's a it's a pay policy statement that we produce every year. Uh. And attached as appendix one is a copy of the proposed statement for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. The policy is largely unchanged and the items that are highlighted in yellow are effectively just updates to make sure that the policy is up to date. Just to deal with some of the main issues that it needs to cover. It sets out what our approach to the pay of senior officers is. Uh. We have a senior leadership remuneration panel, which reviews the remuneration of chief officers and makes recommendations to council in respect of remuneration whenever uh there are any changes to the chief officer structure. And the senior leadership remuneration panel is also the body, which is made up of members in a politically balanced way, uh that reviews the pay policy statement each year and recommends it to council. And the panel did review this pay policy statement prior to the election. Uh. This would usually have come to you earlier in the year, but the election period intervened. And so this is the first opportunity we've had to bring it. Um. In respect of our pay structure, um we apply a nationally agreed pay spine. And then we have a job evaluation scheme, which is the Greater London Provincial Scheme, uh which we use to evaluate different jobs and apply grades on that national pay spine. Uh. In respect of the um award of pay awards each year, we abide by the national collective bargaining process, which is a process run by Joint Negotiating Council with representatives of the Local Government Association and the trade unions on it. And we abide by their determinations. So their determination for the financial year twenty twenty one, twenty two was agreed in late February and implemented in March of twenty twenty two, which meant that staff were backpaid to the first of April twenty twenty one on the basis of that pay award. And that pay award was a pay award of one point seven five percent generally to staff with two point seven five percent for the lowest paid, which meant that for that financial year, the lowest paid in Dembisha were paid at the real living wage rate. We're also required to set out how we make um uh our pay scales transparent. And you'll see that they are appended to this report and are published. Uh. And we also have a series of policies relating to early retirement, redundancy, et cetera. And they are all published on our website, so the public can see all of that information. Um. We're required to state whether or not we make bonus payments to chief officers. And we do not, Dembisha County Council does not pay bonuses, does not pay performance-related pay. Uh. So none of that applies. And we're also required to set out the relativities of pay uh in respect of the chief executive and chief officers related to the lowest paid and to the average pay within the authority. Uh. That's a as a result of statutory guidance following the Hutton Report on fair pay in the public sector, uh which recommended that no public sector manager should earn more than twenty times the pay of the lowest paid person in the organisation. Uh. And it also requires us to publish relativities for average earnings within the organisation. And those relativities are set out in the policy statement. So in terms of the lowest paid uh compared to the chief exec, that's a ratio of one to seven point four. And for an average chief officer against the lowest paid, that's one to four point nine. And again, in respect of average pay, uh in respect of the chief executive, it's one to five point five. And in respect of the average chief officer, it's one to three point seven. So tho- those are the the main aspects of the pay policy statement that we're required to cover. Um. Sophie Vaughan, who's our pay and reward specialist, is available to answer any any hard questions, which are beyond my ability to answer. Uh. But other than that, Chair, that's the report.
Thank you, Gary. Um. I had one hand up, councillor Justine Evans, but it seems to have gone down. Was that in error? It appears to be in error. Sorry. Yeah.
Thanks, Peter. So just to clarify on that, then. This council cannot determine the disparity between the what the senior officers receive and the a refuse worker, for example. It's 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 decided at a national level, not not this council.
It's a national pay spine, so the the pay points are set nationally. And then we have our own pay and grading structure, uh which hangs, for want of a better word, grades against different parts of that pay spine. And those grades are determined by a job evaluation scheme, uh which effectively looks at a set number of criteria and awards points to jobs for the different requirements of the job. Uh. And then they get a points total and those points equate to a grade on the national pay spine. And the job evaluation scheme is effectively the way in which we ensure that pay is approached equally in terms of equalities, so that we're not falling foul of that. All local authorities went through a big national litigation a few years ago uh in respect of equal pay. And the job evaluation scheme is, if you like, protects us in future to make sure that that's determined. Um. The way that job evaluation works, and Sophie can provide more detail, is that we have a panel uh which has got trade union representatives on it as well. Uh. Jobs are described in a job description. That description is submitted to the panel. They will evaluate it against the guidance under the scheme. And they'll award a number of points, and those points will then fit into a pay grade that hangs on our pay spine. In terms of national, in terms of, if you like, increases in pay on an annual basis, those are negotiated nationally through the Joint Negotiating Council and the council's policies that we have. We and it's in actually in our terms and conditions that we will uh abide by and honor any nationally agreed pay award. In respect of chief officers, um the council set up senior leadership remuneration panel set as a politically balanced body with councillors on it. And they reviewed the senior leadership pay structure in twenty sixteen, I think it was. And then annually, they will do a light touch review to see whether or not it's still, if you like, appropriate. Uh. They don't make decisions, they make recommendations. Any changes have to come to council. So, for example, um the law says that county council has to approve um the remuneration package for any chief officer. And any job that is of a salary of a hundred thousand pounds or more has to come to full council for approval before it can be advertised. So council does retain a control on that. So in terms of, if you like, a refuse assistant, that job will be evaluated. It'll be graded and then it will be paid according to the grade on the pay spikes. That's how it works. If you if you need any more detail on that, I'll need Sophie to come in and provide any more to it. Is that sufficient detail?
I was just sort of. Yeah, thanks, Gary. You know, that's pretty comprehensive, to be honest. But the the only thing I would say is, am I right in saying that then the nationally is guidelines?
Uh. No, in our, I think Sophie will confirm, in our um terms and conditions that are nationally agreed, uh we agree that we abide by the national pay awards. So effectively, if the Joint Negotiating Council come up with a pay award, then if we didn't implement that, then we'd effectively be in breach of our contractual terms and conditions with our staff. So that's the that's the basis of that. Yes, yeah.
Excellent question. Thank you, Gary. So we're just supposed to second. Oh, sorry. Councillor Andrea Tomlin. Thank you, councillor.
Thanks, Chair. Just a quick one. Um. I'm a I'm a huge advocate of the fact that I believe a lot of answers to problems and cost savings, et cetera, lie with the staff. Do we have a staff suggestion scheme in the council? As I've seen that work very well in public sector in my life. And um I I wonder if that's something that we have, please. Thank you.
Uh. We have a staff council. Uh. So each service has representatives on the staff. And the staff council will discuss issues and any suggestions that are being made. So, yes, we do, we run that, if you like, through the staff council, so that there's an engagement between members of staff and the authority.
It's thanks, Gary. Is it an award scheme?
No, it's not an award scheme, no. Uh. It's it's um the the staff council is in it is an engagement vehicle. So issues that arise from staff or the discussion of new initiatives, et cetera, the staff council can be used to do that. We also have a system of regular meetings between HR and the trade unions. And in terms of health and safety, we have the Joint Consultative Committee on Employee Relations and Health and Safety. So they receive a regular report and So they receive a regular report in respect of health and safety matters from the health and safety officers.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent question. Can we have someone to move the recommendation, please?
I'll move, Chair.
Thank you. And seconder?
I'll second, Hugh Williams.
Thank you. And all in favour, please show. Anyone against? Thank you. Agenda number seven, the annual reports of the council scrutiny committees to consider reports by the scrutiny coordinator to present the scrutiny committee's activities for 2021-22. Councillor Hugh Irving is very kindly going to present some of this report. Unfortunately, Rian is off with Covid at the moment, so we wish her well.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. I presented this report this morning as vice chair of the scrutiny chairs and vice chairs group for the municipal year 2021-2022. The chairman, of course, was councillor Graham Tibbs. And he is no longer a member of the council. Hence my presence before you this morning. So the report is our annual report for 2021-22. The reason for making the report is to present to the council the scrutiny committee's annual report on their activities during that year. And this is to comply with the council's constitution, which stipulates that scrutiny committees must report annually to the full council on their work and make recommendations for future work programmes and amended working methods if appropriate. I don't propose to go through the appendix line by line. It's there. Appendix is in your pack. But just to summarise the salient points, that the constitution of the Derbyshire County Council stipulates that we should report annually on the activities of the scrutiny committees during the year to the county council. So this is that annual occasion. The report will provide an overview for you of the work of the joint joint overview and scrutiny committee for the Conway and Derbyshire Public Services Board. So that's a separate board, but this report will highlight the work of that report in this year. It'll also refer to the integral role of the scrutiny chairs and vice chairs group in securing effective scrutiny. And it also explains the process for proposing a topic for scrutiny's attention and the method used to determine whether a topic is suitable for detailed examination by a scrutiny committee. On page 10 in the appendix, there is the conclusions of the only review undertaken during the year when members called in a cabinet decision. That is referred to in the appendix on page 10. But basically, it resulted in a cabinet decision being referred back to community scrutiny for further examination. The report also highlights the work undertaken by the scrutiny task and finish working groups, which were set up during the year and which reported to scrutiny and how scrutiny then progressed their recommendations. And also, the report also refers to the types of additional work undertaken by scrutiny members. There's an important factor to scrutiny, and that is engaging with the public and encouraging residents to interact with the scrutiny process. This is challenging. Obviously, we have scrutiny committees, but it's also open to members of the public to request that something is scrutinised. That's, we're eager to engage, but unless a committee is discussing something of local concern or a contentious decision, it seems very difficult to generate public interest in other scrutiny discussions. However, during the year 2021-22, it was extremely pleasing to have students from our school, Dennis Brown, approach the scrutiny committee to ask to participate in the discussion on eradicating the use of single-use plastics in the school meal service. Scrutiny was then able to convey their concerns and observations to the cabinet. Similarly, having service users' families contribute to the discussion on potential options for reopening the MyVod Work Opportunities Service for people with learning disabilities following the pandemic was also a positive interaction. Their contributions highlighted how much service users and their families valued the experiences and skills gained at MyVod and their pride in MyVod's reputation locally and further afield for manufacturing garden furniture of the highest quality. Members of the public can submit a request for scrutiny to examine a specific topic or matter of concern. This can be done via the submission of a scrutiny proposal form, which can be completed electronically, or through the submission of a paper copy of the form, the copy of which is in the back of the annual report. And with a view to improving greater public engagement and participation in scrutiny, all county councillors are requested to draw residents' attention to this facility and this process for requesting scrutiny to examine matters of concern to them. So that's something that members can seek maybe to encourage residents with a concern as a way that they can get their concerns discussed. Throughout the year, scrutiny continued to engage with public and private partner organisations with a view to effectively working together to improve services and outcomes for residents. During 21-22, there were a number of different public and private organisations attending meetings of either a scrutiny committee and a task and finish group and contribute towards their work. And amongst these organisations, we had Betsy Cadwallader University Health Board, we had the North Wales Economic Ambition Board, GUE, the Schools Regional Improvement Consortium, we had North Wales Social Care and Wellbeing Services, Conway and Derbyshire Public Services Board, the Community Safety Partnership, Derbyshire Voluntary Services Council, Natural Resources Wales, Dewa Cymru, Welsh Water, Country Landowners Association, Farmers Union of Wales and National Farmers Union, as well as private flood risk consultants and water engineering companies. As a result of participating in one task and finish group, one external organisation's representative commented how much he had enjoyed being part of the group and stating they look forward to contributing in future too, as he thought there would be many positive outputs from the group's efforts. As the council's term of office groups were closed, the scrutiny chairs and vice chairs group undertook an evaluation exercise of scrutiny function's effectiveness. During the next few months, the group will be analysing the results of this exercise with a view to identifying areas that require strengthening and improving during the council's term of office. So that's an overview of what is in the report. I hope you've managed to find time to read it in amongst the other large items in today's pack. I am happy to take questions. I'm sad to say that Rian unfortunately is off sick and is not here, so. Oh, sorry. I apologise for that. I can't see on the screen. Apparently she is here. So good to have you with us, Rian. I hope we're not impending on your recovery. So if members do have any report, any questions, we will try to we will try to answer them for you. So any questions, members?
Before I ask members for questions, Rian, would you like to make any comments or be happy with the comments councillor Irving has completed?
Thank you very much, Chair. No, I think councillor Irving's carried the majority of the points in the report, I think. I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, just to point out now, once this report is approved, it'll be then sent for translation and it will be published on the council's website.
Thank you, Rian. Councillor Peter Scott?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking at page 30, and it was probably me that said how much I enjoyed working on the task and finish group for the gypsy traveller accommodation assessment, and I also worked on the flood repairing committee as well. You probably can't answer the question, but I know we sent this report for the GTA to communities who agreed it and said they would send it to Welsh Government for ratification. Have we added anything back from Welsh Government? Or are we not at that stage yet? Thank you, Chair.
So, Rian?
I'm not sure, because that was part of the LDP process, if I'm correct. Maybe Gary would know a bit more about that side of it than me. But before I ask Gary to comment on that, out of that task and finish group on that, there was people were quite keen who'd worked on that, that in future a similar approach is taken when looking at matters relating to gypsy and traveller sites, perhaps. But I don't know if Gary knows a bit more about the LDP or even Graham.
I would have to check. Sorry, councillor Scott, I'd have to check with the officers, but I can get you an answer outside of the meeting.
Thank you, Gary.
I'd be in the same position, I think, in terms of waiting for response from Welsh Government, et cetera. So I think the best thing to do is to provide an update outside of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. It was probably me that said such a good idea to have a task and finish group, that we should carry it forward for any site selection as well, but we'll leave it there. Thank you.
I think just on that point, Peter, that will be councillor Scott, that'll be something we'll be picking up with the new lead member in the way that they would like to develop the process going forward. To be fair, they haven't had a briefing yet on that particular issue. It's to some degree in abeyance, aren't we, while waiting response back from Welsh Government on the need assessment? So there's a bit of time to pick that up. But no, the task and finish group worked well. So there's some logic in continuing that task and finish group to continue the work of the gypsy and traveller site allocations, if necessary, et cetera. But we await the response from Welsh Government on the needs assessments. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. I shall wait for Jason to elect me to that task and finish group. Thank you.
Councillor Emrys Wynn, please.
I think he's on mute. I can't hear what he's saying, sorry. Can't hear anything he's saying.
Emrys is on mute.
Councillor Emrys Wynn's not on mute, but we're not receiving audio, so. Perhaps if you want to move to another speaker chair, and we'll come back to Emrys, councillor Emrys Wynn. We don't seem to be receiving his audio. Councillor Mark Young?
No, I'm fine, Chair. No.
Okay. Councillor Andrea Tomlin, please.
Thank you. Just a quick one. Just looking at the numbers of requests brought to scrutiny. As a newcomer, I see 19 were brought last year. Two questions. Is that a typical number for any year? And also, is a request by a resident a rare thing, please? Thank you.
I don't know whether Rian can take that on the statistics.
Yes, the statistics, very similar to previous years, but of course, Covid has impacted on everything. But it's roughly around that number. Requests from residents are rare. We do get the odd one. But also, what you have to remember is that residents may ask their local councillor to raise something, and they might bring it. But we're really, really glad if anybody did want to fill one of those forms in as a resident, send it to us, and then we can then work with them on, perhaps on the wording for that request, if it's a bit too local or anything like that. But yeah, we've got a duty now to engage with the public. So, you know, we are really keen to engage with them. The problem is, the public find that they really do want to engage if it's something contentious or if it's something that's a real concern to them. But there are other matters, it is very, very difficult to get them to engage. But I think you as local members have got a role to play in that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I think if I could kind of support Rian's comments there. The process, for those that may not be clear, is we have the scrutiny chairs and vice chairs group. We have a proposal, a scrutiny proposal form, and there's a copy in your pack. So, but I know Rian wouldn't be averse to receiving a telephone call if you have any confusion. And she will assist you and support you through making out a scrutiny request. The form comes in either electronically or physically, and then it comes to a meeting of the scrutiny chairs and vice chairs group. And we look at it and hopefully approve it for discussion and allocate it to the appropriate committee, whether it's performance partnerships, communities. So all it can do is or scrutiny, if anything comes to mind. And of course, if a member of the public comes to us, as they do, with a concern, then maybe we can look at it ourselves and think, well, yeah, that could be scrutinised and then take it into the process. But yes, as Rian says, it's unusual to get a request coming in from outside without it having touched a member somewhere. But nevertheless, would be welcome.
Thank you, Hugh. Ask Gary to come in for a minute.
Oh, just in respect to councillor Scott's question, I've contacted the relevant officers. No, we haven't had any formal response yet from Welsh Government, and we understand that that's the same for all local authorities, that nobody's yet received a formal response.
Thank you, Gary.
We'll try councillor Emrys Wynn again, see if we can get you. You're currently on mute.
Right, there we are. Are you able to hear me now? Yeah. Just, it's not a question, it's a comment, and I want to make a positive comment. The scrutiny committees are so valuable, certainly to the work of the council, every member of the council as well. And I approve the hard work that goes into creating a report like this one. These are the opportunities that each one of us has to challenge, if needs be, to support, if that's the wish, and also to offer amendments, improvements, if there's an opportunity there. And I hope to see more activity like this happening in the scrutiny committees over the term of this council in order to strengthen what we're trying to do within the council. General comments, but just to congratulate. That's the intention and that we ask for assurance that this work will continue under the leadership that we have currently. Thank you.
Yes, if I could just support what Emrys has just said. It was quite interesting, I think would be the right way, when the group from from students, was it from our school, Dennis Brown, wasn't it, I think, came in and addressed the scrutiny committee, told us their concerns about single-use plastics. And as a result then, they were able to sit in and participate in it, which resulted in a resolution and hopefully maybe another area of policy for the council. But that was a really good example of young people bringing their concerns to people that they felt they could meet and talk to. I think, I don't know whether Emrys would agree, but it seemed a very good exercise to me.
Continue, I'll do it. Yeah, totally agree with you. It's my...
It's a good experience for us as councillors too, to hear what what people on the high street, you know, quite often want to say and possibly don't feel that they have the opportunity to say so. So very valuable. It's a very effective democratic process.
Thank you both.
There's no more questions?
There's one, there's one more question, sorry. Councillor Hugh Williams, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair. It's more of a statement, really. Quite a good debate today. I'd like to agree with Emrys. I've chaired scrutiny communities for the last five years. And as a chair, I welcome members of the public to come and talk. And every chance they have, I do allow them to talk. I think it's really good. What we're open, transparent, and we scrutinise. It's all fair. And I just like to support what Emrys and what Hugh has said as well. And yeah, you know, we've called in cabinet decisions as well, so it's I feel that it's really good and, you know, reports from the Welsh Authority Office in the past have proven that as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Hugh. Last comment or question from councillor Chris Evans, please.
Morning. We're talking about single-use plastics, and we're going to this new recycling system that's happening in Derbyshire with the Conway of. Can I just ask, because some of the, well, not some, a lot of the residents in Myvod are concerned that, you know, the blue bins that we actually now use... are concerned that, you know, the blue bins that we actually now use, what's going to be the end issue with them? Are we going to have a yard full of them somewhere? What's going to happen to them? Thank you.
Have we got an officer can answer that for us present? Might not have, I don't know.
Probably not.
In which case, I think maybe that's something that could be dealt with outside the meeting. Would that be the correct procedure?
Graham, so Graham, did you want to comment?
I will, but I noticed that lead member councillor Mellor, his hand is raised, so I should probably defer to the lead member first.
Thank you, Graham.
Barry, thank you.
Barry.
Yeah, thank you, Graham. As far as I know, and I've only been in post a few weeks, but it's one thing that has been mentioned, and we as a council will be selling those blue bins on. So that's the idea, and there's different prices what we're getting for the bins, but the blue bins will be getting sold on. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. No more questions, so we need to.
Right, yeah. If there's no more questions, I can take us to the recommendations. Before I do, I would just like to express my personal thanks to the scrutiny coordinator, Riam Evans, who as ever has gone beyond the call of duty and come in this morning.
Thank you.
Hope she'll be better soon, but her advice and support to myself and scrutiny is absolutely invaluable to the working of the process. And I think we should all be very thankful to Riam for the commitment she gives us to support the work of the scrutiny committees. So having said that, the council considers, the recommendation is that the council considers the annual report of the scrutiny committees for 2021/22, and it comments accordingly, which I think you have, and hopefully approve the publication as outlined.
Is there a second, please?
Yes, me.
A second, Chair, please.
And then, please show. Anyone against? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh. Thank you, Riam. Going to agenda item number eight, the committee timetable, to consider a report by the Democratic Services Manager and Senior Committee Administrator to approve a committee timetable for 2023. Hand over to Steve Price. Thank you, Steve.
We can't hear anything of that.
Sorry, Graham, I haven't.
There we are.
It's just sorting out my microphone.
Sorry, Steve, yes. I wondered if I'd frozen then. No, sorry. Carry on.
Good morning, everybody. I've got three reports, possibly in quick succession. I'm not intent to labour the point, but obviously, if there are any questions that I can answer, I'll be more than happy to do so, and I'll take away and bring back answers to any questions that I can't answer. The first one is agenda item eight on the committee timetable for next year. This has actually been written by Cath Jones, our senior committee administrator. So I'd just like to thank Cath, because it's, I've done this in some previous years, and it's a difficult task, trying to get viable dates, both with officers who would bring things to committees, and to make sure committees don't clash with other things that are going on, so that there's a full timetable. I think there's about 150-odd meetings in the timetable there. So Cath has done, has done that kind of Herculean task and put it together for us. I did just want to make a couple of comments. The report's been drafted, so in the appendix you can see the dates. I usually find that the most helpful one. So you go across, you can see the dates of the committees that you're interested in. Also, in a calendar format for most of the committees that are in the timetable. And then Cath has provided a committee-by-committee breakdown of the factors behind why the dates are as they are for those, for those meetings. The one other point I wanted to mention is that in every term of council, and we are in a new term, aren't we? It's a legal requirement for councils to survey their members, just to check that we're getting the right meeting times, locations, and so on. I think, as I mentioned in the covering report, this requirement did predate hybrid meetings and everything associated with it. So it'll be interesting to see when we do this time, when we do this survey shortly, as to what the conclusions are. I'm sure hybrid issues are a major factor in determining location and times for you, but we'll do that survey, and then if necessary, we will adapt the 2023 calendar. Other than that, Chair, the recommendation would be at the end to approve the timetable, but there.
Don't appear to be any hands up for questions. Sorry, one in the chamber.
Sorry, Peter. I mean, this is an old one, I'm sure, an old, old one. The timings of meetings for semi-retired and retired people, really. I'd argue that excludes the younger generation from becoming a councillor, because they simply cannot get those times to come to meetings, you know. I mean, I availed myself before I was elected of the timings of meetings, so I knew exactly what I was getting into, but I was, I was a bit horrified really about the number of meetings that were taking place during the daytime, you know. Employers, if you're still working, employers, I know, I can, well, I can only speak for my employer, but I'm sure it's elsewhere, they're really not very helpful at all to, and they, my employer puts everything it can. I've got right, I've got a right to have time off for public duties, I know that, but they, they're, you know, not very helpful. And, you know, I have to force the issue every time that I come to a meeting. So is, you know, is there any way we can, we can look at, and I fully appreciate as well for officers, it's not, you know, not great to be working in evenings, but.
Yes, this is, this is an issue which has, as Riam has said several times. Part of the reason behind having a statutory duty to consult members and to take meaningful notice of what members say about the meeting times is that one of the issues the Welsh Government have flagged is that to have a diverse chamber, you know, you need to remove obstacles, and if the meeting times are an obstacle, then they need to go. Before each major election, each local authority election, we do promise, of course, this is coming down, it's down to the council that is elected to choose its own times. But if enough, obviously, of a certain demographic young people get in, of course, they will have the influence there as well. So it's something that we do promise candidates. The meeting times that we have had won't necessarily be the meeting times that you will have, because this survey will be, will be done, will be conducted. So we will run the survey, but it is the current council, councillor has been elected, that chooses the meeting times for itself. And then before the next local council elections, we'll be doing the same thing. We'll be telling people, you know, you will have the choice to review this. We have done the survey each time. Obviously, there has been a very, very clear consensus in favour of the current timetable for various reasons. I think some of the ones which have come through, and it'll be interesting to see if they're the same, are that some members have a great deal of evening duties too, you know, town and community councils, governing bodies, and they naturally clash. Now, I don't know whether that is an age-profiled thing, or whether younger members will also have those engagements as well. But we will bring you back the full analysis of what you tell us, and then that will be, that will be looked at again. So that will come back to council. It is a tricky one, though, I guess.
Thanks, Steve. Councillor McClellan, please. Jason McClellan.
Thank you, Chair. I really welcome John raising that point, because as it's been mentioned, it has been spoken about before, and I think it's important, as I raise my hand to speak, what I had in mind to say was exactly what Steve said, that the Welsh Government have identified the meetings in the day and existing work practices as perhaps a barrier to obtain a more diverse chamber. But I know that, as we've said, it's not without its challenges, because we then have an expectation staff, we'd have to work in the evenings. But I still do think there's a piece of work to be done around that, that a percentage of meetings could be conducted later in the day, not necessarily, you know, going all into the, into the late hours, but if we can have like a five o'clock start on agendas which might perhaps be a little lighter than others, I think there's some scope to think outside the box. Covid has forced us to do that. It's definitely a place for using hybrid in evening meetings as well, so we don't have to, you know, leave home in the evening. And, you know, for those of us who don't live near a thing, we don't have the travel either end, so that, that helps the timing of evening meetings as well. I think it's definitely something we need to look at. But I also, I'm also concerned that increasingly to hear of employers reticence in releasing staff for meetings, and this is perhaps for the council ourselves, this is a wider conversation in the public sector. But I really do think we need to start pushing for a dialogue with employers, both in the public and private sector, that actually, do you know what? It's a good thing that your staff are engaged in public life, engaged in local democracy. It makes them, you know, we all, I'm sure we all love our roles here as councillors, and we take a lot from it, and that can feed back into our working lives, whether, whether in the public and private sector. So that's something perhaps the Welsh Government can do, you know, particularly public sector organisations as well. I just, I just think we need to be getting a message there to employers that it's actually a good thing that your staff are engaging in this process. That's the carrot, the stick is, as John has actually rightly pointed out, we have legal statutory rights to take time off for these duties, and I think that the profile of those rights needs to be raised. I mean, otherwise you find yourself in a situation where members are taking their own annual leave to come to meetings. That impacts on their own family life, which isn't acceptable. So I think there's two wider conversations there about evening meetings and, you know, a wider push across the public sector, that employers should release their staff for these sorts of meetings. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Councillor Bobby Feeley, please.
Can I just flag up quickly that it's not always convenient, from a family point of view, to have evening meetings? And I know when I first became a councillor, I had young children at home. If the meetings had been in the evenings, I wouldn't have ever done the job.
Thank you, councillor Bobby Feeley.
I think, Bob, I think Bobby, that's absolutely right to point that out, and it's part of the challenge, isn't it, about getting that balance? So you're absolutely right to say that, yeah.
Councillor Hugh Irving.
Yes, well, I mean, yes, I hear what John says, and he's got very valid points. I just recollect, like Bobby, the time I was a member of a district council for quite a number of years, and we met, was it two evenings or three evenings a week at Mrs Butterfield, may remember, at six o'clock. And quite honestly, I used to dash from work to meetings and be going home at half past nine or ten o'clock, having had nothing to eat since lunchtime, shall we say. And I can tell you now, members, that was not conducive to good decision-making anyway. And I saw some very difficult decisions made late at night, particularly in housing committees, when we used to decide as housing committees who could have a council house or whatnot. The trick was to wait till right till the end of the meeting, at quarter to ten, ten o'clock at night, when members were going, members were tired, just to slip something in. So evening meetings isn't the answer. But I quite concede that there is a concern that John has raised. I also note that the only group that seems to meet in the evening in this timetable is Prostatin Mag, so I can reassure him about that, that that does meet at six o'clock in the evening, but that must have been a decision taken at some point in the past. But, but, but yes, we have got something to think about.
It is a difficult one, quite clearly, and as Steve has said, at least by doing a survey with current councillors, you know, that'll highlight difficulties and all the rest of it. I've got another question. Chris Evans, please.
Hi. Just going back to what councillor Jason McClellan said. In my working life, I don't get released from, from work to do this, my council. I have to either take it unpaid or use my leave. But with what's going on in, I know in the postal services, they get six months to do council duties. With what everything's happening with the striking and that, all these, these benefits and these add-ons are all getting stripped off. So, you know, businesses can facilitate so much, but I, speaking of, my own father's got his own business, that they'd be very reluctant to let people out of work to do these issues.
Thanks for your comments, Chris. Hand over to you then, so, oh, sorry. John, you want to come back?
Sorry, Peter, I'd just like to clarify you what Chris has just said there. I don't know where on earth he gets the six months off from the postal service, as seen as I do work for the postal service, and I'm getting a lot of kickback from my employer for trying to get one day off a week. So, yeah, just like to point that out. I've never heard of that one before.
Thank you, Chair. If I could direct the council to 3.1 recommendations, please, if anybody is happy to propose second and from there.
I propose, Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Seconder, councillor James, thank you. All, sorry. Oh, sorry. Councillor Elvid Williams, I didn't see your hand up. Beg your pardon. Did you want to comment?
Yes, just supporting to certain extent what Jason was saying. You know, we need to have a balance possibly of evening and day and meetings, but I'd like to. Can you hear me?
No, it's quite difficult to hear you. Where's your microphone?
It's here.
Right, I can't see you, sorry.
Yeah.
Go up on your laptop. Now.
Is that better?
That's a bit better, a little better, yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying that, you know, I think it is important that we do look at council, at meeting times. It is varied for people, you know, depending on their background and their work, or if they're not working. And I would welcome to, that we look at this. I know you're saying that a survey is going to go out to councillors. Could I ask, when is that survey going to come out? Is that something that's going to happen soon, or is it something that happens only once every few years, or how does that work? Thank you.
Yes, we have to do it once every term. I think it will be going out, probably will, might release it towards the end of the recess, but not hold it over the recess in case, in case people are on, away on a break and so on. So we'll put it into the forward work programme, we'll bring it back to a future meeting to put in the forward work programme for some time after the recess, following probably a three or four-week consultation with members on what times and various things they want for their meetings.
Thank you, Steve. So we had a proposal. We did a proposal in the second, didn't we? So can council show they're approved, please? Show of hands. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Steve. Oh, sorry. Any against? No. Okay, agenda number nine then. Appointments of Chair and Member to the Democratic Services Committee to consider a report by the Democratic Services Manager and to appoint elected members to the Democratic Services Committee. Hand over to Steve again. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Chair. This, the Democratic Services Committee, we brought this. This, the Democratic Services Committee, we brought this to council in May, to the annual meeting. This is a statutory committee. Every council's got one. And it's, it's a bit different in terms of the appointing of members and the chair to the other committees in that it's a council function, which is why we're bringing this here. Back in May, the full political makeup of the council wasn't determined because cabinet members cannot sit on this committee. So what we have here now is, if we go to paragraph 4.4, the groups have nominated the members listed there, and we have five vacant seats, four are for the Labour Group and one is for the Plaid Cymru Group. If those vacant seats can be filled or nominated now for council to approve, as I say, it's for non-cabinet members, that would be great. In the past, that can prove difficult on the hoof in a way, at least, you know, once we get to council. So council has in the past authorised the lead, the group leaders to confirm their own nominations. And also, we need council to appoint the Chair of the committee. Just for clarity, and I know it won't affect any issues, but this is a chair seat which is not remunerated, there is, there are no fees for this. It meets twice a year. And so council needs to appoint a Chair and the members, please.
Yes, Chair, you need to ask for nominations for Chair of the Democratic Services Committee. It's just a reminder that it can't be a member of a group that's represented on cabinet. So it can only be a member of either the independent, the conservative or the Green Party groups. Thank you. Had a move, councillor Hugh Evans, do we have a seconder?
Yes, thank you.
Any other nominations? No, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, that's the, that's the first hurdle. Does the Labour Group and the Plaid Cymru Group have nominations for their, for their vacant seats? The Labour Group has four seats and Plaid Cymru has one of its two seats still vacant. Potentially, Chair, if we can't resolve this now, if perhaps council can approve the members already nominated in paragraph 4.4 and delegate authority to the Labour Group leader and to the Plaid Cymru Group leader to nominate their chairs outside of the meeting.
Councillor Jason McClellan.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds sensible, Steve, to what you've just said, yeah.
Okay, so councillor, happy with that. Oh, sorry, councillor Elwood Williams.
Yeah, I'll put myself forward for the second, the other Plaid Cymru seat for this committee.
Thank you, that's fine. Thank you. So what we need now then, Chair, is just someone to propose a recommendation, which effectively is that council approves the members of the Democratic Services Committee that have been nominated and identified in the report and delegates authority to the leader of the Labour Group to provide the final names for the seats available to that group on the committee. Council happy to approve. Any show? Any against? Thank you. Agenda item number 10, appointments of a member to North Wales Police and Crime Panel to consider a report by a Democratic Services Manager to appoint an elected member to North Wales Police and Crime Panel. Again, I'll hand over to Steve and I believe Jason McClellan wants to say a few words as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Right, this is the third of three, so hopefully we're whipping through it. Again, this is an exceptional appointment really, because it has to be made by council, which is the reason why we're bringing it today and why it's not a cabinet member delegated decision or a cabinet decision. The Police and Crime Panel is a North Wales body. Each of the six local authorities are informed as to how many members they may have on the panel. In Dembeshia's case, and it's based on population, in Dembeshia's case, it's one. And the Central Secretariat also have a look at the makeup of each council in the region and are able to identify from what political group each council's appointment must be. In Dembeshia's case, the one member must be from the Labour Group. I have consulted and issued some information to Labour Group members, but at the moment I've not got confirmation of expressions of interest. But it's for council to appoint a Labour Group member to the Police and Crime Panel. If you want any further information on how this is done, I have just looked up the De Haunt formula. I look it up each year, we do this. So I'd be happy to answer questions on that. But that's, that's how the, that's how the maths have worked out for the appointments.
Thank you, Steve. Councillor Diane King.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to nominate Pete Pendigas. I think he's well qualified for this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brian Blakely.
Yes, ignore my last comment, I forgot I had my mic on and I'm sure you heard all that I said. I'd like to second Pete Pendigas on the Police Authority. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations, please? On the basis that there are no other nominations, Chair, then the fact that that's being moved and seconded means that councillor Pendigas is appointed as the member for the Police and Crime Panel. Agenda item number 11, Dembeshia Leisure Limited, appointments of directors to consider a report by the Head of Legal, HR and Democratic Services to appoint new directors to Dembeshia Leisure Limited. And over to Gary.
I think Chair, sorry, councillor McClellan is just going to introduce the report first before I speak. Yes, thanks, Chair, and thanks, Gary. Yeah, just, sorry, can you hear me? Are you hearing me? Yeah. Yeah, you can hear me, okay. Just, I'm not on the screen, so it doesn't look like I'm talking. Can everyone hear me? Yes. Yeah, okay. I'll crack on. And so the report before you today is brief, she was to the composition of the board of the directors of the company, Dembeshia Leisure Limited. So just a bit of a background, Dembeshia Leisure, to use a technical phrase, is a not-for-profit local authority, local authority trading company limited by guarantee. And the council is the sole owner and member of Dembeshia Leisure Limited. So the constitution of the company dictates the composition of the, of the board. And it's a 4-3 in your papers, who the board members are, so you can see those, I won't rehearse them. So the Dembeshia Leisure Limited was established in the last council. And again, I won't go into the details of that, many of you'll know that it was, it's an arms-length company set up to run Dembeshia's leisure services. And the last council felt that the lead members whose portfolio covered leisure and also covered education should be the members on, on the board. And this was discussed at cabinet, and for the sake of continuity, it was felt that those, the two new members, lead members in those, with those portfolios should continue to be the directors on, on the board. It also, there's also a strategic governance board which sits above the, and separate from Dembeshia Leisure. And Gary can correct me if my technicalities are correct on this. And that oversees the governance of the company itself. And the, the structure of the governance board mirrors the structure of the directors' board, and on that sits the head of education. So it was felt that we'd stay with those two portfolios. So the nominations will be councillor Chris Thomas and councillor Jill German. There is also provision for a non-cabinet member to be on the board. And I'll hand back to Gary now. Gary, shall I make a nomination now or shall I, I let you speak and then you take a nomination from the floor?
Happy to speak, leader. The position is as set out by councillor McClellan. The company has a board of directors and the composition is set out in paragraph 4.3. And the lead members were, as councillor McClellan said, the lead members for education and the lead member for leisure, and it's proposed that that continue. There is also a non-cabinet member directorship that's currently occupied by councillor Pendigas. And in consultation with the company, prior to submitting this report to council, the company did suggest that it would assist the board if there was some continuity in respect of the directorship of the non-cabinet elected member. Just in terms of the strategic governance board, just to make clear the separation, the board of directors is the board of directors of the company. The strategic governance board is a body that's been set up by the council, it's internal to the council, and it oversees the governance relationship between the council and the company. And the membership of that is made up of the leader, the lead member for finance, the chief executive, the monitoring officer, the section 151 officer, the contract manager, a scrutiny chair, the Chair of the Governance and Audit Committee, and I think that's it, actually, that's my list. So that, that is an internal body. So what we're looking for today is appointments to the company's board of directors. And they're set out in the recommendations in terms of the lead members. And in respect of the non-cabinet elected member, we would just seek a nomination for that position.
I'll nominate councillor Pete Pendigas to comply, to comply with the request from Dembeshia Leisure that there's continuity.
Do you have a seconder, please?
I'm up to second.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Young.
Can I, can I nominate councillor Hildes Roberts, please? He's also got a background of working on that board. Thank you.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded, thank you. There've been some technical issues with the Zoom poll members, so what I suggest is, we've got two nominations and that I will ask members if they can indicate, are members happy to indicate by hand their preference if I name the two candidates and ask members to indicate their preference by hand? The first nomination was for councillor Peter Pendigas. Could members please just show, either by raising their hand on the hand function or raising their hand manually? Can you raise your hand if you want to vote for councillor Hildes Roberts to be the director? Okay, can those who raised an electronic hand previously put it down? And then if those are raising an electronic hand for councillor Hildes Roberts, put them up, please.
Jason, your hand's still up.
Yeah, councillor Roberts, your hand's still up.
I'm trying to get mine down, but I can't get it down at the moment for some reason.
Can I clarify, my hand was definitely down on the vote for councillor Hildes Roberts. That was a legacy hand from previously.
Is my hand down now? It still won't go down.
Down now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much.
See, members, I'm not satisfied that's worked, I'm going to do a roll call, if that's okay with members.
Yeah, brilliant.
So I will call your name out and if you could indicate the person that you would like to vote for. So if you want to vote for councillor Pendigas, just say his name. And if you want to vote for councillor Hildes Roberts, please say the name. So councillor Brian Blakely.
Councillor Pendigas.
Councillor Joan Butterfield.
Councillor Pendigas.
Councillor Cluett.
Councillor Pendigas.
Councillor Anne Davis.
Councillor Hillditch, please.
Councillor Karen Edwards.
Councillor Hildes Roberts, please.
Councillor Pauline Edwards.
Councillor Hugh Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Gwyneth Ellis.
Councillor Horace Pendigas.
Councillor Elson.
Councillor Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Chris Evans.
Hugh Hildes Roberts, councillor.
Councillor Hugh Evans. Councillor Justine.
Gary, can I, can I just come in there? Hugh did ask me to give his apologies for today, I forgot to pass them on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Justine Evans.
Councillor Hildes Roberts, please.
Councillor Bobby Feeley.
Pete Pendigas.
Councillor Jill German.
Councillor Pendigas.
Councillor Harland. Councillor Heaton.
Councillor Pendigas.
Councillor Hugh Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Pendigas.
Councillor Holliday. Councillor Alan Hughes.
Councillor Pendigas, please.
Councillor Hugh Irving.
Councillor Hill, councillor Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Alan James.
Councillor Pete Pendigas.
Councillor Delith Jones.
Hildes Roberts, please.
Councillor Diane King.
Pete Pendigas, please.
Councillor Janet Lloyd-Williams.
Hugh Hildes, please.
Councillor Julie Matthews.
Councillor Pendigas, please.
Councillor McClellan.
Councillor Pendigas, please.
Councillor Mella.
Councillor Pendigas, please.
Councillor Mendy's.
Hugh Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Winmullen James.
Pete Pendigas.
Councillor Marvin Parry.
Hugh Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Pendigas. Councillor Sandalands.
Councillor Pete Pendigas.
Councillor Peter Scott.
Councillor Hugh Hildes.
Councillor Chris Thomas.
Councillor Horace Pendigas.
Councillor Andrea Tomlin.
Councillor Hildes Roberts, please.
Councillor Michelle Walker.
Councillor Pete Pendigas, please.
Councillor Cheryl Williams.
Councillor Pete Pendigas, please.
Councillor David Williams.
Hugh Hildes.
Councillor Elvid Williams.
Horace Pendigas.
Councillor Errol Williams. Councillor Hugh Williams. Councillor Emery Swin.
Councillor Hugh Hildes Roberts.
Councillor Mark Young.
Hugh Hildes Roberts, please, jock about.
Sorry, councillor Delith Jones, are you there? Sorry.
Councillor Pendigas. Thank you.
Chair, there were 23 votes in favour of councillor Pendigas and 16 votes in favour of councillor Hugh Hildes Roberts. So councillor Pendigas is appointed as Director of the Company.
Well done, Peter.
Thank you, members. And can we just confirm a mover and seconder, Chair, for the appointment of the two lead members, councillors German and Chris Thomas? Can we have some...
I propose, Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favour? Please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Agenda item number 12, appointments of town, city and community council representatives to the Standards Committee to consider a report by the Head of Legal, HR and Democratic Services to appoint a town, city and community council representative to the Standards Committee. Hand over to Gary, please.
This is a report that deals with the appointment of the representative of the town, city and community councils to the Standards Committee in May. Council agreed that officers should consult with town and city community councils. And on the report, appointment of councillor Gordon Hughes, who's from Carraway, Town Council Two, representing town councils on the committee. We've been in touch with the town city community councils on the re-year nomination appointments. And all responses received supported the re-appointed of councillor Hughes. So I'm looking for a decision from council to reappoint councillor Gordon Hughes, according to the recommendation in section three of the report.
We have somebody to move, please.
I'm happy to move.
And second? Thank you, Alan James. All in favour? Please show. Any against? Thank you, that's carried. A site on the agenda of the council forward programme.
Thank you, Chair. Members will see the council forward work programme for September has a petition scheme and the appointment of member champions. I think in October, we'll probably need to put on the results of the survey of members in respect of the timing of meetings. And any other items that come to us over the summer will be included on the forward work programme for September, October and December.
So members, can we approve, please? Please show. Thank you very much, members. And that's the end of the meeting. Thank you.